I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, January 11th. If you would all stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you would please let the record show that we have Tammy West, Ryan Osmus, Barbara Lundine, and Lisa Killian present for the board meeting. And first order of business, we need the adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report. I make a motion.
Do you have a revised agenda with an additional item added?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Tammy and a second by Ryan, all in favor? And the approval of bills, I was able to look those over and everything seemed to be in order and...
I looked them over.
Oh, you did?
I didn't have any problems.
Okay, okay.
I just didn't call them, I should have called and said I didn't have a problem.
Great, okay, so do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I make a motion for approval of the bills.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Tammy and a second by Barbara, all in favor? Zero. And we have some special presentations and Yvonne usually makes me look really good and comes up with these little blurbs of things I can say. And she's out ill, so I'm going to stumble through this on my own. First off, we have Justin Coffey and he is the 2016 Kansas Teacher of the Year. He's a teacher at the high school and wrestling coach at Comanche. Good so far? Awesome, okay. And we're very excited to have him representing Dodge City. This is the first time in history, is that right? That we, that there has been two from the same school representing consecutively. So, we're very proud of Justin and his accomplishments. I've got a certificate for everyone, but if you would just stand by, I'll come down after I get through everybody instead of going back and forth. We also have Laura Woolfolk, she's not able to be here this evening, but she is the Kansas Master Teacher of the Year nominee. And then we also have April Baugh, 2017 Kansas Teacher of the Year nominee. That's for elementary, correct? Okay, and then we have Kelly Nedler, 2017 Kansas Teacher of the Year nominee for secondary. So if those that are present would come down to the front, I've got a certificate for you. It's great to have such a great group of teachers. It seems like we never run out of good ones to nominate, so that's awesome. All right, next order of business, we have STUCO reports. Yvonne Chavez from Dodge City High School, is he? I don't see him, okay, I didn't see him either. All right, well, we'll give him a chance here, we'll move on. We got Jay Sean Taylor from Dodge City Middle School.
I don't know about y'all, but I'm tired, I just got here from basketball practice. Okay, we started, last year, our school implemented breakfast in the classroom as one way to ensure a healthy lifestyle. This year, as a part of our wellness policy, we are able to carry water bottles during the school day. During the second semester of this year, we are trying to increase physical activity throughout the school day. Already, our sixth grade students walk in the gym every morning before school starts. Our seventh and eighth grade students are discussing a place to walk in the morning before school, which might include the auditorium. All school communication, besides doing early morning announcements every morning, we're also using our iPads to receive text messages from Remind. As a part of our 21st century learning culture, each student in our school checks their email one to two times per day for important messages or reminders to keep them updated on what's going on. Some of our STUCO messaging for January will include information on upcoming dances, food drive, ease for patients, reminders in our yearbook cells. We are also using the district text messaging services for parent reminders. During the month of February, we have designated one week during, one week drive from February 15th through 19th as our penny for patients. Our goal is to raise awareness of cancer being a killer of children, as well as raising funds to help find a cure for this disease. The goal is to raise funds so doctors and scientists can continue researching to make someday today by finding a cure for cancer. Any questions?
Thank you. And next up, we have Amy Sobranas and she gets, oh, are we not ready, are we not done? Okay.
My name is Raul and I'll be talking about Scholars Bowl. On January 7th, our eighth grade Scholars Bowl team went six and three, earned third place medals at Scott City. The sixth and seventh grade teams earned first place in the Round Robin, going undefeated in nine matches, beating Hays by 20 and every other team by 40 or more. The Geography B. Geography B will start next week in the gifted classroom and is open to students nominated by their social studies teachers and students involved in this quarter. Enrichment class. The top 10 will complete to determine the school champion, January 20th. The school champion, January 20th. And the winner will take the qualifying test to see if he or she gets to go to Berlin for the state championship. The last thing is History B. History B's school-wide round, round, was completed on Monday and 10 students will be taking the online regional qualifying exam on Thursday to see if they qualify to go to the regional final, final in Wichita on March or April. Questions?
Now we're ready for Amy Sobranas. She gets, she's from Comanche Middle School, she gets extra points because when I came in at 6:10, she was already here, so.
I thought there was a meeting at 6:00, there clearly wasn't. Happy Step in a Puddle and Splash Your Friend Day. Yeah, that's today, it's a national holiday. Okay, so I've been waiting for the past hour to tell you that. Yeah, I was here at 5:45, I didn't want to be late, I was more than early. Today, well, we've been discussing another dance, maybe a Valentine's Day dance, we don't know. And we've also been discussing about helping out in the community. We're either going to write letters to the soldiers home because they don't get many letters, or sending cards to soldiers overseas. And we're going to hopefully get everyone in the school to, English is hard, I'm sorry, to participate in it. We're also going to hopefully have a box tops race, like between grades, so that we can raise enough box tops for our school. And we've been talking about a carnival. We were planning it in the beginning of the year, but there was so much going on, the hatchet game and everything, so we decided to move it to the spring, which is now, well, around now, but yeah, we're going to be starting on that. And a proposal has been made for snacks to be sold in school, like at the snack bar because my vending machine was, my vending machine idea was shut down sadly, but yeah, I know. We're waiting to hear about that decision. And as much as I love doing nothing for the past, like, two weeks of Christmas break but watch anime, I miss school more than I'd like to say. And I'd like to invite you to Comanche anytime so that you can experience my day, including running two miles because seventh grade girls do not know how to run, so we get, we have to run even more. But I'm sure you would like the school as much as I do. Any questions?
Thank you, Amy. Okay, now we have the public hearing on the amendment of the 2015-16 budget for USD 443.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. This evening, as you're aware, we passed a bond issue, which is why we've been very busy administratively and throughout the administration, planning those improvements to our facility. And while we had passed it before we approved our budget, we hadn't really sold the bond yet. So we had to make some assumptions on what that was going to look like with what we'd actually have to budget this year. Turned out, we needed to spend a little more out of this year's budget based on the capitalized interest than we had anticipated. And in order to stay within statute, not get a statutory violation with our audit, we have to amend the budget. So the budget amendment that is here is basically, we had opened for public discussion, it will not raise taxes, it basically moves a little more of the prepaid capital expenditures or the capital interest to this year from a following year. And that's really the whole thing, but just to make sure we follow the law. And we've kind of run this by Dale Dennis's office and our attorney and bond counsel and financial advisor, so I honestly think we're okay on everything, it's just something we had to do. Any questions, and then we can open it for public comment if you would be so kind. We need to open it for public comment, Dan.
So if there's anyone that would like to approach the podium to address the budget for 2015-16, you are free to do so now.
It's one of the requirements, we have a public hearing, so we have, now if you want to close the public hearing, we can close the public hearing, and then we'll deal with this as it's presented to the board in a later point.
All right, well, we officially will close the public hearing then. Thank you, Bill. All right, we have the recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The president shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. So if you would like to address the board at this time, you may do so.
Hi, I'm Ashley Wheaton and this is Lee Gleason and we are from KFSA Insurance. And we came here tonight to clarify a few things about workers' compensation insurance and how it works. The first of these is premiums and commissions. There was a statement made that your workers' compensation premium is currently less than half of what it was when KFSA serviced the workers' compensation insurance, and this is the case. But it's a true testament of what KFSA has brought to you in the past three years. As you know, our risk management team was employed to assist you in controlling your losses and in minimizing claims. And while working with you, we have lowered the frequency and severity of your workers' compensation claims. And by doing that, we've actually also helped bring your work comp experience modification factor from a 1.21 to a 0.86. And not a lot of people know what the experience modification factor is. And what that is, is it's a factor that's used in rating workers' compensation premiums based on the number and severity of losses that you have in a policy period. Therefore, your work comp premium is directly influenced by the number of losses that you have. And they use this factor in doing so, so when you lower the amount of losses you have, your experience mod decreases and therefore your premium goes down as well. And this is why your workers' compensation premium is half of what it used to be because your modification factor is going down. We also wanted to hand out the attached documentation that shows what your experience mod has done over the last three years while KFSA has serviced your work comp policies, if it's okay with you to pass those out, we didn't know if that was...
Thank you.
And the next clarification that we'd like to make is in regards to commissions. Workers' compensation policies are federally regulated, therefore commission cannot be removed from your workers' compensation policy. Whatever commission rate is set between the agent and the company, the insurance company, it must be upheld. This would be the case for whatever company you carried your insurance with, you currently carry it with United Heartland, but it doesn't matter what insurance company, they all have to follow the same regulations. With this in mind, commission cannot be removed from that work comp policy. So instead, the fee charged on your other commercial package policies that are currently with EMC could be lowered to account for the commission that is being received on the workers' compensation policy that's in excess of that amount. When you package more policies together, you tend to receive a credit. For example, when you buy home and auto insurance and you package those together, you save money. In your case, the credit has to just be taken on the property and casualty insurance policies since you can't remove commissions on the workers' compensation side. And additionally, we'd like to discuss accessibility. It is correct that not every agency or insurance agent has the ability to get to United Heartland, which is your current carrier of your workers' compensation insurance. But this is also the case of EMC, which is the current carrier of your property and casualty insurance. It is possible to bid the agency on the work comp policy and not the insurance company, just like it is to do that on your EMC package that you had requested the RFP for. So you could still continue writing your workers' compensation insurance through United Heartland, receiving the same premiums and pricing that you're paying today if you so desire. You would not need to obtain any new insurance experience mod factors at this time in order to bid just the agency and not the insurance company itself. The school district is in the business of education and we are in the business of insurance. However, we like to make sure that we educate our customers on insurance and what they are purchasing and how it works. So our intent today was to educate you on the details of workers' compensation policies so that you can make an informed decision. And at this time, we'd like to know if you have any additional questions for us. Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, the approval of minutes for the December 15th, 2015 Board of Education meeting, the approval of the disposal of district-owned property and equipment, approval of purchase of equipment for state testing, and the approval of the use of school buses by the City of Dodge. We have a motion then by Ryan and a second by Barbara, all in favor? And new business, curriculum and instruction. Now, first up, the Tournament of Champions presentation by the Dodge City High School TOC Committee.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Gleason and I'm a senior at Dodge City High School. My parents are Joseph and Rebecca Gleason and I'm involved in softball, student athletic training, the National Honor Society, Student Council, and I'm a Tournament of Champions Chairwoman. I'm currently employed at Gibson's Pharmacy and LRLE Contracting, and my future plans are to attend KU and study to become a pharmacist. Our other TOC committee members include juniors, Cara Unruh, daughter of Shane and Angela Unruh, Paige Harding, daughter of Derek and Jan Harding, and Briar Whitaker, daughter of Brent and Amy Whitaker. Sophomores are Cameron Lowry, daughter of Matt and Tavi Lowry, Leah Stein, daughter of Mike and Colleen Stein, and Sydney Foster, daughter of Dave and Summer Foster. TOC is a class and seniors have it every day, all year long, whereas the juniors and the sophomores have it every other day, all year long. Some of our senior responsibilities for this tournament include contacting the cheer and the basketball coaches for information, as well as contacting the officials and the Man Fridays. We schedule halftime entertainment, which includes Hays Cheerleading, Hutchinson Cheerleaders, Wichita East Cheerleaders, Dodge City High School Cheerleaders, Dodge City Middle School Leaders, Dodge City Middle School Drill Team, Comanche Middle School Drill Team, the Dodge City Diamonds, and the Little Feet Dance Academy. We schedule national anthem singers as well. They are Austin Nelson, Suzie Arkell, George Pyle, Yvonne Chavez, The Madrigals, The Pride of Southwest Kansas, The Marching Band, and The Pep Band. Some of our other responsibilities for this committee include the freshman basketball tournament, working whack track, keeping score at volleyball games, and any other office work for athletic events. The teams attending this year's tournament are Dodge City, 6A; Leavenworth, 5A; Hays, 4A; Hutchinson, 6A; Mays, 5A; Manhattan, 6A; Wichita East, 6A; and Wichita Heights, 5A. We have a lot of talent coming to this year's tournament. Something special about the teams attending are Dodge City has four returning starters: Dayton McGordy, Bryce Unruh, Noah Williams, and Caden Walters. The other senior impact player is Eric Greed, and he was selected first team All-State in football. Hays is currently ranked fourth in 4A. Wichita Heights, currently ranked second in 5A, they are 5As defending state champions with two returning starters, Devon Gill, who is 6'6", and Aaron Williams, who is 6'3". A's is currently ranked number one in 5A. Manhattan, who is currently ranked number four in 6A. And Wichita East, they are currently ranked number one in 6A. They are 6As defending state champions, and their star player, Xavier Kelly, who is 6'6", weighing in at 255 pounds, has committed himself to Clemson to play football. He is 6As All-State in basketball in 2015 and one of the top 11 football players in the state of Kansas. I'll now turn it over to my co-chairwoman, Sidney Kelsher.
Hi, my name is Sidney Kelsher and I'm a senior at Dodge City High School. My parents are David and Diana Kelsher. At the high school, I'm involved in drill team, as a drill team captain, cheer, as a cheer captain, National Honor Society, Student Council Secretary, BCD, which stands for Be Bold, Be Courageous, and Be Different, and I'm a Tournament of Champions Chairwoman. My future plans are to attend Wichita State University and obtain a bachelor's degree in science and nursing. I hope to one day work at hospice and dance for a professional team. Some of the players who have come to this tournament that are still playing include Jalen Love from Wichita East, who is now playing basketball at Denver University. Bubba Starling from Gardner Edgerton is now playing baseball for the Kansas City Royals. Some of the players from Heights include Evan Wessel, who plays basketball at Wichita State University, Perry Ellis, who plays basketball at KU, and Gavin Thorman, who plays basketball at Missouri State. Gino Grisim from Hutchinson is playing football for the New England Patriots. Connor Frankcamp from Wichita North is playing basketball at Wichita State University. And Ron Baker from Scott City is playing basketball at Wichita State University. The teams that will be attending the Tournament of Champions in 2017 include Dodge City, 6A; Derby, 6A; Junction City, 6A; Shawnee Mission South, 6A; Wichita North, 6A; Bishop Carroll, 5A; Newton, 5A; and Holcomb, 4A. Some of the other special things about our tournament include our annual free throw contest. This will be our 62nd annual free throw contest, and the final rounds will be held in between games on Saturday evening. Another special thing is our cheerleading attraction. The cheerleaders will be performing to a mix of popular songs and with the performance in between games on Friday evening. The teams also get an opportunity to go read to the elementary kids on Thursday and Friday. We will have a pep band at all 12 games. All 12 games will be streamed live on DCHSSports.com and all 12 games will be broadcasted on 98.1. On Friday, all games will be aired live on Cox 22. We had our run-through game last Friday versus Cimarron to get a feel for the arena. Some of the awards that we will be giving out at this tournament include our first-place trophy, first through third-place medals, individual sportsmanship award, coaches' sportsmanship award, team sportsmanship award, all academic basketball player, all academic cheerleader, most inspirational player, and our Boot Hill Free Throw Contest first and second-place trophy. Our FCA speaker this year is Dayton Moore. Dayton Moore is the Senior Vice President of Operations and the General Manager for the Kansas City Royals. Moore's run in Kansas City has been one of the most successful in franchise history, with him boasting nine Rawlings Gold Glove Awards, 13 All-Star Game selections, and a Cy Young Award winner in just his first nine seasons. Moore has also been in the Atlanta Braves organization and was an assistant baseball coach for George Mason University. Moore graduated from George Mason University in 1989 with a degree in physical education and health. Three years later, he obtained his master's degree in athletic administration. He and his wife Mary Ann reside in Leewood, Kansas, and have two daughters, Ashley and Avery, and a son, Robert. Our FCA sponsors and organizers are Jeff Hires and Kirk Schrader. We have held the TOC breakfast on an annual basis since 1981. To purchase tickets, go to the Dodge City High School Athletic Office and they're $15. To get tickets for the tournament, go to the United Wireless Arena box office or Ticketmaster.com and search United Wireless Arena. This year's tournament sponsor is Western Plains Medical Complex. Some of the other sponsors that we have include Dodge City Community College, Forget Me Not Farms, United Wireless, Kiwanis, Lions Club, and the Rotary Club. All games on Thursday, January 21st, and Friday, January 22nd, will begin at 2:00 p.m. And on Saturday, January 23rd, the games will begin at 1:00. Again, to get tickets, go to the United Wireless Arena box office or search Ticketmaster.com. Thank you so much for having us here, and are there any questions?
Well, I'd like to know, can you recite each other's little speeches?
Probably.
Very impressive, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
After listening to this presentation, I feel like I need to go out and practice a little bit. I'll be referring to page 21 in your board agenda this evening, and if you'll notice in the middle of that page, there is a link, and this link will take you to some more that was sent out to all of our certified staff members pre-K through 8 last Friday for them to be able to go in and sign up for the January 18th, pre-K through 8 Certified In-Service Day. It is called, our topic is Turning Good Today's Into Terrific Tomorrow's. It'll be held all day long, January 18th, at the Dodge City Middle School, and our keynote speaker is Ginger Lumen. Ginger has become a friend of Dodge City. She now is an international speaker, a great supporter of educators and students, and has been for a long time. The teachers receive this and what they would do, they first of all would click on this and it will take them to a page that is a work page here, worksheet that shows all of the different events that are happening so they can see it at a glance, and then it has descriptions of every single presentation that's available for them to pick from. Then they can go back and click on the signup session, and this takes them to My Learning Plan, and My Learning Plan is something that they're used to using. This is where they sign up for professional development points for renew their license or to move over on their salary schedule. So they would just sign in the corner with their user login and all of the different events would show up right there for them to continue and go on. Then at the very back, very bottom of this page, is a map showing them the location of all the different events that are happening at the middle school. So we encourage you, if you have time to stop by and attend any of the sessions or spend the whole day with us, again, it's at the middle school and it's certified pre-K through 8. And I'd like to thank the Dodge City Middle School for hosting us and for everybody that helped plan and put all the logistics together to make this a successful day. So if you have time, stop in and visit with us. Questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yvonne is not here this evening, but we wanted to take just a moment and celebrate Board of Education Appreciation Month. It's being recognized statewide this week for most school boards. Just to remind our public and our employees in the school district, we have a Board of Education that serves in a very important position, but they're all volunteers. Very seldom do they get the recognition they deserve. We appreciate their service. What you see happen at a meeting is one small part of everything they do to be ready to serve as your Board of Education. Prior to a meeting, they receive usually hundreds of pages of information to be familiar with before they come up to the meeting and vote on different items on the agenda. So the refreshments we have here this evening are in honor of the Board of Education. We encourage any of you out there in the audience to take a break and go over and pick something up and eat. They can do the same thing. We have a small token to present to them tonight of our appreciation for their service, and that is a USD 443 portfolio. They will all, we thought we'd have them all tonight, but we don't. They will all have also their iPads upgraded. They've had, they have some of the oldest iPads in the district right now. So they'll have their iPads updated to the new iPad Pros and they will fit inside these portfolios. So I'll present each board member with a new portfolio and we'll get your iPad as soon as you can make an appointment with Mr. With. Ask everybody to show your appreciation for our school.
Thank you. Thank you. Very nice. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right, moving on, we've got Business Services. Bill is back up.
As we earlier had the amended, the public hearing for the amended budget at this time, the Board of Education has respectfully requested to adopt the amended budget for the FY 2015-2016 as published and authorized the clerk of the board to file the amended budget with the county clerk and the Kansas State Department of Education. Are there any questions?
We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Thank you all for taking care of that. That keeps us away from statutory violations, so we are grateful.
That's important.
Chris Myers this time is going to come and give an update. As you know, the board's approved some capital outlay projects and Chris is in the process of working through those.
Good evening. Right now, just a quick update. We have classroom furniture pricing back. We're working on a board consideration sheet to bring it to you next meeting. We have all the information for carpet. It's going out to bid this week. Speaker from Memorial Stadium, it's a demo speaker. It will be in by the end of the month for us to listen to, to see if we like it, to put a spec together to send out. Working on a bright beginning, or not bright beginnings, baseball-filled handicap restroom and seating for demon field. Getting the specs together, put for that. Working on the specs for the freezer for the food storage and process of getting some surveys done for some parking lot repair. And the rest of the items we're still working on.
Thanks, Chris.
Well, we're in the middle of trying to get the bond issue projects off the ground. I just mentioned that, so. Okay, the last thing we have is basically the update on property casualty liability and workman's comp and brokers services. First thing I need to start off with is a little background. One of the things we've been looking at from my department is, given the budget situation that we're in this year, we're trying to look at every place we can basically save a dollar, but not adversely affect education. You're aware, last year with the block grant funding that came in, we lost about a quarter of a million dollars immediately on capital outlay each year. You're aware that we also lost LOB equalization from state, about 350,000. We won't know how that turns out this year until we get assessed valuations and so forth. We've run some numbers. Normally, at this time of year, as a growing district, we have some good news because we've grown, which we did this year. We have additional waitings. Unfortunately, this year with the block grant, we don't get any more money. So there's a pretty substantial reduction in what we're going to have to work with in future years on it. A second thing I need to give a little background on is, I started this business a number of years ago, and one of the things I learned early on was that I don't shop bids. When we take bids at the, you know, at the table, we basically, I don't ask for changes in bids. Sometimes I do ask clarifying questions, but as I told our chair, there was a point where I had a, early on in my career, we were bidding out some automobiles and we took bids in the morning, and that afternoon I had a couple car dealers on the phone with me saying, "Well, I could really do a little better on that." Well, what you could've, should've, would've done's fine, but we take a bid and we're done. And I have just never made a practice of shopping bids. So when we get a bid, that's what we take. If you have a problem where you don't think you get a bid that meets the needs of the district, as we did with Activity Buses, you'll remember, we came back and asked the board to reject all bids and we rebid that based on board's action. It wasn't something that happened in the business office. So we just don't do that. I do ask, like I say, sometimes clarifying questions on this. The question that has come up on this whole issue is, we really had three proposals or bids based on this thing. One was Fee Insurance Group, one was KFSA, and one was USI Midwest LLC. And the question seemed to be raised at the last board meeting, if we somehow tied workman's comp together with our other insurance, would we be able to get a better package? And in your packet, if you'll notice, there is a chart that shows what we did. And what's basically happened is, this year, since we bid out workman's comp as a separate package, the commissions on workman's comp were basically a little less than half of what they were last year. In other words, we were paying about 100% more for the commissions on workman's comp insurance last year than this year. The second thing that I would note on that is that when we took the bids last year, we had a number of bids, and one of the bids, the low bid was from United Heartland, and basically they're a uniline carrier. They don't, though, offer their product to all brokers, and they do offer it to, in this case, Fee Insurance, but did not offer it to KFSA. The second low bid that we had last year was from the Kansas Association of School Boards pool. Kansas Association of School Boards does not work through local agents or brokers. They basically, it's a direct thing with the pool itself. So if we'd been where all the bids were together when we took the workman's comp bid last year, we would've spent, and I got that number someplace, it's about $30,000 more than we ended up, you know, that we would've had to spend above what we did. It was $30,831 more. So I think it paid us to take separate bids and look at those separately last year. The second question that we do look at is at the commissions, and again, going back to your chart that's on page 26 of your board packet, you'll notice that last year for the EMC commissions, it was $84,149.15. In other words, that's where we are this current year. The bids that came in, Fee Insurance Group was 40,000, KFSA was 47,000, and USI Midwest was 20,000. I did ask, because I'll be honest, I looked at USI Insurance and I was a little concerned because there are some companies that have been accused, they'll buy insurance the first year, you know, some medical company or medical insurance carriers used to say, "Well, they'll lowball you the first year, then after they've got you, then you watch out, your rates go really up." I was concerned whether they were going to hold that. All three companies basically said they would keep those prices. KFSA did come back and say, "If we do the workman's comp and that together, we go lower." To me, that would be a rebid situation. It's not something I would take because that's like shopping bids. The fact is, all three companies said they would return their bid. So I've tried in the last couple of weeks, because I know I was kind of dancing around on one foot at the last meeting, I don't know how to bid the workman's comp and your other liability packages together and get the best value for the district. So I do have some questions, and I guess I'm just going to kind of open it to the board. If you'll give me some direction, I'll try to do what I'm asked to do, but I do not know how to pull it together. And based on history, when we bid them separately, we've come in with better pricing.
I was curious, Bill, and I'm quite sure you explained this to us last month, but the USIs half of what the other two are, what was the reasoning behind that and why did we decide to not recommend going with them?
The recommendation, and I feel like I owe you a recommendation as a board, you all can choose, you can choose any of these bids and I'll work with whoever, that's fine. My concern was that we also use our agents for risk management to a certain point, and I'll be candid, I want an agent that's going to be in and out of the district, kind of know what's going on. For example, and thankfully, Jeff Hires kind of walked through as we were talking about having to replace the equipment at the high school. Remember, we had a bunch of some chillers and compressors? And he said, "Bill, I think that's covered in your insurance policy." That's one I would've missed, to be candid with you. But because he would happen to know our situation here locally, he caught that and went forward with it. The USI, they do, by the way, they do the entire Wichita Public Schools, I told them, for less commission than we paid last year with KFSA. So I think they would handle it. The question is, would we get the service that we need and would we miss something? Again, that's just, that's an evaluation call. If the board wants to go the 20,000, if you want to go the 40, if you want to go the 47, it's entirely up to you.
They're out of Wichita, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And they are a large agency. They have a lot of offices across the country, do a lot of business. You know, but that's the reason I chose to keep somebody local. I think that's worth something. But again, if the board, for $20,000, if you think it's better to go with USI, I'll work with whoever. If you think it's better to go with 47, that's not a problem. Again, what I'm trying to do between what it appears we could save on fees on this and workman's comp, in my opinion, we basically have funded a teacher next year. And that's what I'm trying to look at, is how we can save money without reducing the coverage to the district and...
Bill, I have a question. On the agenda, it says that this is an information item, and then on the page, it says it's an action item.
I thought it was an information item.
Information. It's our mistake.
So it was just information tonight.
We're not voting on it tonight. We're just getting information.
So...
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
The RFP basically gave other options, but we also said the RFP was basically for this insurance. If they wanted to present other things, we'd take them into consideration. And again, for the reasons I mentioned this evening, that's why we did not take into consideration the workman's comp insurance. And by the way, I do have a letter from our current carrier of workman's comp that was the low bid, and they do not recognize KFSA as an agent. I mean, they will not, they will not sell insurance through KFSA. They won't do it either. I've got an email.
They have contracts with them.
They said they won't do it, so got it in writing. So that's why we didn't go with the workman's comp.
I think the biggest issue, the board last time directed that we go back and try to find a way to rebid this to include the workers' comp. And I think what you're hearing tonight is, Mr. Hammond's position is that we should not combine those two. We shouldn't make it one package when workers' comp, and I think KFSA folks said it very well. If you're going to recover any savings from putting them all together, you're probably not going to get the savings from your workers' comp side. You may get it on the other by bundling. We have a workers' comp contract right now that goes through, what?
Uh, June 30th.
30th? Okay. United Heartland. So it really is at your discretion as a board what you would like us to do. Our, right now, our workers, our property casualty liability goes through when?
March the, it basically is in March.
Okay.
And what we are trying to do this time, as you remember, we talked last year about doing it, was take it where we'd buy an extended period this year so we can start having that come due June 30th or July 1st, so we can do a better job budgeting. Because right now, when I put together a budget, I've got a budget what I think it's going to be in March. Well, if you budget low and you don't have enough money to pay your insurance, you've got a problem. On the other hand, if we, if we know right then, we can get closer and we think we can do a better job budgeting. And that was the reason we were going to try to change that one.
I guess we need direction from the board as to, last, last time, the last meeting was pretty clear. I mean, you wanted us to go out and rebid, rebid it to include workers' comp. I think you've heard tonight a better explanation of why we may not, it may not be in our best interest to do that. We could do either, or we could do as KFSA did, and that is ask for a bid without it and then a bid what it would be if it was included and rebid, or we could accept one of the bids that's already been presented at a subsequent meeting, because really it's not on the agenda as an actionable item tonight.
I guess I kind of like the idea of a bid with and then a bid without.
Option.
Yeah.
I would be willing to vote.
Well, I'd say from history, going separately is better. I can't imagine that... I mean, I'm happy with the bids we have.
My feeling is that we have a business manager for a reason, understanding the ins and outs of insurance. It's not a simple matter. Hard to understand. I think you really have to have some experience with it and trust in Mr. Hammond's recommendations as someone that we should follow.
Okay. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, yeah.
Had a request from several Board of Education members to consider changing the start time for Board of Education meetings from 7:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. If that's in agreement with at least the four of you that are here tonight, we'll be glad to do that beginning in February. I've said about that one. Whatever your preference is, we will, we will do.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve that.
Okay. We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Tammy. All in favor? That was easy.
That was easy. We can do that. As you are aware, we have an elementary principalship open for next year. We have a, an assistant superintendency for elementary education open for next year, and we have the executive director of human resources position open for next year. Board of Education members have typically served on screening and interview teams for district-level administrative positions, and we've had typically one or two representatives from the board serve on building-level leadership position interviews. So I'm here... district-level administrative positions, and we've had typically one or two representatives from the board serve on building-level leadership position interviews. So I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Education if many of you, if you are interested in serving on screening and interview teams for these positions. Let you know, we could have as many as three. We can't have a fourth board member, it becomes a meeting, but we could have as many as three. Typically, we've had one or two people serve on these committees. And since we have at least two of these that are district-level committees, what I would like for the board to consider, a process I would like to, to use, is to have the interview and screening team conduct the interviews, screen the applications, conduct the interviews, and then when we get it down to either our selection, or one or two or three finalists for those positions, we not only make those people available to the interview team, but also make them available to meet in a casual setting with building leadership and even instructional staff, teachers who might be interested in coming by and visiting with them, just to get a perspective on what kind of leadership they might provide our district. This evening, we'd like to ask board members who would, who would be available and who would like to serve on interview and screening teams. Have had Mr. Hires contacted me before he left to go out of town this weekend, indicated that he would like to serve at least on the human resources interview and selection group. Open it to the floor for any of the rest of you, express your opinions, and if you don't know about dates and times, that's the next thing I want to ask you is, when, because I'd like to get the screening down, interviews here by the end of this month.
Jeff had indicated to me also that he'd like to serve. I'd be happy to, and it would like to, or, I mean, I could do it, we could have up to three, so.
I would like to be a part of that HR group. My schedule is just so unknown during, that would be the biggest, I don't know, Alan. And I'd like to, but I just don't know. And those would be day meetings and...
Could be during the day. We could actually even do some on a Saturday if that worked. Got to contact the people we've screened down to. We currently have nine applicants, I believe, for the assistant superintendency through our application system, and five for executive director of human resources. KASB is accepting applications for those positions for us. Some that have come through them, they may be duplicates of what we have. Deadline's not until Friday.
I was just going to say, I would like to and am available, but it's totally up to your discretion. Check on availability.
What if we were to have Ryan and Jeff on the HR position, that particularly? Between, yeah.
Next question then, of course, becomes times, days and times. I don't have any idea yet when the candidates would be available. On a Saturday, would that work better for everyone's schedule, or? Full day?
Saturday?
Could be a full day, any day of the week, couple of half-days. It'll be the...
Can be over? No, I know when it's over, that's my hunting day. I'm joking, though, if that's when it is, that'd be great. Well, I'm not really joking, that is my hunting day. Happy to do it on a Saturday.
After pheasant season.
After pheasant season.
A lot of people who are in other positions, either in our district or around the state who have applied for this, would like to know sooner rather than later in order to let their current supervisors know.
I mean, yeah, I guess in, in all sincerity, you know, whatever works with your schedule or the team's schedule and their schedule, and I'll just try to make mine.
Would you rather knock out and just book out an entire day to do the interviews for your group?
That'd be excellent, yeah.
Or two half-days, and if we can get it on a Saturday or something, that would be okay?
Yeah, either one.
Is there a day of the week?
For me, two half-days would probably work better.
Two afternoons, for instance? Might work better for Jeff, too. PMs are a Saturday, two afternoons are a Saturday. Okay, and we'll just see what we can do. Okay? Okay with you, when we get it down to our finalists, we would set up something informal for, for instance, for all principals to meet with the assistant candidates for elementary.
Any idea what timeframe you're looking at, how soon? Is it earlier set this week?
Friday, the 15th is the deadline for applications, but we also said, based, depending on who submits applications, what kind of experience and preparation they have for the positions, we're going to keep the positions open beyond that. So what I'd like to do is, first part of next week, if we could get all the information out to the interviewers or to the screening team, applicants, and decide how many it is we want to interview, get those interviews scheduled within the next, now on the end of the month, we should have the interviews completed.
Board of Education member district responsibilities, Barbara, the Park and Rec Advisory Board?
We have not had a meeting since, in my special head.
So Bright Beginnings Head Start, is there, we've got Tracy gone tonight, is there anything? All right, and special education, we don't have anything legislative, is there anything?
Tomorrow at 5:30 is the government, governor, state of the state address. It's not going to be on television, but it is going to be live streamed. And Wednesday, he's supposed to announce his budget for 2017. Everybody to check up on that and see what happens with schools.
Got our update? Already got that? Nothing on calendar?
Calendar committee, actually, there's a vote-out. We anticipated possibly having some results by the day we wanted to be out, we don't have. They are voting right now for the 2017-18 school year calendar, we're always two years out. So we'll have that ready for you at your luncheon meeting.
We have Jeff scheduled to review the bills prior to the February board meeting. Announcements, Monday, January 25th, we have Board of Education meeting at noon at Will Roads. Monday, February 8th, Board of Education meeting here in the Austin Boardroom at 6:00. And Monday, February 22nd, Board of Education meeting at noon at Dodge City Middle School. We have items for future board meetings or additional information. On February 8th, we'll have a presentation on dyslexia, and then the review and approval of the broker services for property casualty liability insurance. Is there anything else?
I might mention that Dodge City Days in Topeka, Dodge City Nights, excuse me, in Topeka, has been scheduled for Monday, March 7th, which is the same day as our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Usually, a couple of district administrative staff and a board member or two try to participate in the Dodge City Night activities. It's to show our appreciation for legislators and state officials, and we're helping remind them that there is life west of Salina. And so it's a good opportunity for us to be up there and showcase what the good things that are going on in our community. It's a joint partnership with the city and the county and the community college, school district, and major businesses, Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, and so on. Will be necessary then, if we're going to participate in that activity, to change the meeting day for our Board of Education meeting in March. Scheduled on the first Monday of the month, because the second Monday is spring break, the third Monday is the first day back from spring break, and the fourth Monday, we actually have no school because of a long Easter weekend. So if we were going to reschedule that, we would need to do so on maybe Tuesday, the 8th, or Thursday, the 10th. I'd like to ask you to think about that between now and our luncheon meeting.
Will Roads.
Change in, in board meeting date for March. We have to, by law, have one meeting per month, or we would move it to the preceding Monday, but that's in February, so.
All right, we are ready for executive session, discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel. How long do we need, Alan?
15 minutes. Myself, Brad Ralph, I think that's it.
Make a motion for 15 minutes of executive session.
We have a motion by Tammy and a second by Barbara, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.